Let me learn my new mic, sorry. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take note that all the commissioners are present this morning. Are there going to be any agenda changes?
Yes, item number E2 has been pulled from the agenda. It was determined that extension or the appeal was unnecessary.
Okay, so now we'll go to the public. If anybody has anything to say that is not on the agenda, now's your time to go to the mic and speak. No? Okay. We will go to consent agenda, approval of minutes. Has everybody reviewed the minutes this morning or have any changes? No? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve of the minutes for?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next we'll go to a public hearing for extension of time for approved conditional use permit for Cottage Springs Resort. And Gina, you're doing that presentation?
I am.
Okay.
Okay. So as Lisa just so briefly described, you have before you an extension of time request for an approved conditional use permit. Back on January 13th, 2015, the Board of Supervisors approved a use permit allowing Mr. and Mrs. Guthrie a permit to construct and reopen basically a snow play park, which includes a Tube Hill and some other amenities. There was quite the extensive list of conditions that they had to complete. They, they basically were proposing to build a lodge with accommodating parking lot, some restroom facilities, and all kinds of other amenities that were gonna help serve the business and the public as they were coming to play at their, at their park. The list of conditions is pretty extensive, and we only allowed them two years per code, basically, just less than two years, 23 months to be exact, to basically complete all of the conditions of approval in order to validate the permit. And, and for a use permit, what validates the permit is the issuance of a building permit. In this case, they basically had to comply with all the other conditions. The building permit was the very last thing that they were able to obtain. So they've kinda run into some bumps along the road. As I said before, the list of conditions was pretty extensive. They had to provide potable water to the parcel, they have to produce a storm water management plan, a snow storage plan, their improvement plans to the building department require grading plan, drainage plan, erosion control plan, soils and geotechnical reports, applicable state permits, in addition to a storm water pollution prevention plan. They have to obtain a Caltrans encroachment. And all of this has to be done before they can even start the construction of the lodge and the parking lot. So far to date, they've actually secured potable water for the parcel, they've paid through the small water district in the area, they've actually purchased their water hookup. In addition, they have gotten a necessary grading permit for infill that they needed for the parking lot. So that was the first stage in their whole grading process. So they went through, got that grading permit, that was all approved, the infills in. In addition, they have to locate, there's an existing easement on the property for the access from Highway 4. And they commenced the surveying process, trying to identify the location of that easement. The surveyor ran into some issues because prior surveys were inaccurate, and they're having a difficult time kinda pulling it all in. They know it's there, they just have to positively identify it. Can't get an encroachment permit until they identify where the access is. So they've kinda had some obstacles along the way. Some personal circumstances arose that kinda pulled Mr. Guthrie away from his project there at the, in Cottage Springs. I know we can't really use that as findings, but under the circumstances, I think that they've actually, you know, continued to progress through the process with the true intent to complete all of their conditions in order to get their permit. They actually only asked for a year, but under the circumstances, and staff actually feels that a two-year extension is more appropriate. That's all they can get, that's all the code allows, so they'll have, if approved, the next two years to complete this process and be able to validate the permit. So there won't be any room for extension beyond the two years. Any questions?
Yes, is the county, would the county be prejudiced in any way by granting this extension? Have you heard from any county agencies that would object to it?
That, that would object to it?
Object to the extension?
No, so during the public, the public hearing process to, for the use permit, all the county agencies weighed in basically with, with comments and conditions. All of those conditions, as requested by those agencies, were compiled into the list of conditions of approval. So there's no actual objections to, to the approval of the permit, and through circulation of the extension, I received nothing from any of the agencies contacted that objected to extending the permit and allowing the Guthries an additional two years.
And I'd like to note that you can't do a whole lot there year-round because it's under snow for six months out of the year. So that plays a huge role in progress. So are you done with your report?
I'm done.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Guthrie, do you, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Dick Guthrie, 3651, Shawshone, Camp Connell, California. I think Gina Catherine's done a pretty good job presenting the staff's position on it. The only thing I can add is, on a personal note, we still have business interest in Lowdy and Galt. The Lowdy manager operation left two months after the Board of Supervisors gave us the conditional okay to move forward. So I've had to commute to Lowdy five days a week since then. We've only recently got a manager, so I can return to retirement and work on this project full-time, if you wanna call that retirement. Yeah, Gina mentioned the long list of conditions we had to meet. We have had some difficulties. Caltrans has been somewhat supportive, but until we get the encroachment permit in hand and everything, it's just kind of up to them. The, the county things, those are standard, we'll meet those as we move forward. But they're just a lot on our plate, and we just couldn't address it, so we had to ask for an extension. So I'm here primarily to ask if there are any questions that the individual commissioners may have of me.
I'm just curious, I was surprised that the U.S. Forest Service isn't involved in this. It's not forest?
No, it's all private property, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's one hurdle we didn't have to overcome, so we are pretty lucky there.
Yeah, I believe, Tim, that they actually own adjacent properties, if I recall correctly, which would've included them in the original circulation process, you know, obtaining comments regarding the, the use permit.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if the public, does the public have any comments on this?
Good morning, Colleen Platt with My Valley Springs and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. We just want to support this extension of time. We read the staff report and saw the extensive work that the applicant has put into the project. I think it was something like 35,000 tulips planted on the property with benches, and they obviously have intent to complete the project, and they're showing very good faith in all the grading work and the permits that they've obtained, so we support this extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back. Anything further, Gina?
Just one thing. We, we kinda changed up the, the evidence supporting finding number two on the resolution. I had a short discussion with, with Commissioner Wooster. He made some really good suggestions that I thought really kind of just were a really nice addition. So we just kinda switched a few things around, omitted one of the sentences because it was reiterated in another evidence. So if you don't mind, I'll just read it to you and see if you concur, if there's any issues as a result of that. So finding number two, evidence now reads, "A building permit is required to validate the CUP," or conditional use permit. "All of the other permits must be obtained prior to the issuance of a building permit." "A survey of the subject property has commenced for the purpose of locating the exact easement for access onto the property from State Route 4." The surveyor, excuse me, the surveyor encountered inaccuracies with previous surveys that have broadened the scope of survey work. "A Caltrans encroachment permit may not be obtained until such easements are actually located. Additional time is necessary to secure the remaining permits and approvals necessary to obtain a building permit."
I have another question on the resolution itself.
Sure.
I don't understand why on both two and three, we have this semicolon and the word "and" before evidence. Shouldn't it just be a period?
Oh. Yes. I don't know where that came from. Thank you.
It is?
There was one other change in paragraph four that I suggested. It'd be the fifth line down, which the sentence says, "A grading plan has been obtained to import soil into the property for the construction of the parking lot." The word "plan" actually should be...
I'm sorry, Kelly, can you turn your mic on, please?
Oh. The word "plan" should actually be "permit."
Push it again, the light didn't go on. There you go.
And that was it?
Okay. Okay. Mr. Guthrie, any further rebuttal? Are you good? Okay. All right. Then we will close the hearing and bring it back to the commission. I would like to state that two years ago, when Mr. and Mrs. Guthrie came forward with the project, I was not on the commission at the time, but I did come to the hearing as a member of District 3 and speak in favor of the project, so I just wanna go on the record with disclosure on that, so, okay. Any comments?
No.
Okay. Well, is somebody would like to make a motion to approve of the resolution?
I move to approve it, as amended.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. E2 has been removed from the agenda. So we're gonna move forward to number three, which is an appeal of planning director's denial, commercial cannabis cultivation registration application. And it looks like Paul's gonna be doing our presentation on this one.
Yes, ma'am. And this is for Yen, correct?
Yes.
We received a request for a continuance on this item, and I believe I forwarded that to all of you yesterday. There was a supplemental note that came in yesterday afternoon to me, and you'll find that in your package sitting on your table this morning. And it's further request from counsel for the appellant, states, "Thank you for the courtesy of your response and me providing my communication with him. I may have neglected to tell you in my letter that I am under doctor's care medication. My injury is unforeseeable and avoidable. I was hoping I would be able to attend the hearing tomorrow, but unfortunately, as of this moment in time, I am not. A denial of my request for continuance will have fatal effect if this ends my client's administrative remedy and would be an unfair result to my client due to no fault of their own." The planning department...
Paul, could you speak more directly into the microphones?
Yes, I can do that. The planning department does not have any problem with this continuance. If that would be the wish of the commission, the appellant has been advised that the next available date would be April 13th, should you choose to do so. However, if you choose to review the, the project at this meeting today, I'm available to do that.
I note that County Council has had some comments on, on this, and I would think if we, if we grant the continuance, that perhaps the planning department and the County Council can work together and...
Yes, we would, that would, that could be very beneficial, yes, sir.
And the only thing I note right now is that on, on the resolution as, as presented under three, that says the photograph submitted by the applicant to demonstrate that "they", and I think that "they" should be, I assume this is a male applicant, should be "he."
She.
She, okay, that's why. I was leaving that question open.
No, it would be a she.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any public comment on a continuance for this particular application or appeal? Okay. Is, I guess I should've asked if the appellant is here first, but I think that in the letter it stated he would not be here.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, well then we will bring it back, and you guys wanna have discussion on a continuance? How do you feel?
I don't see any reason why we can't continue it till the 13th.
I wonder if we might wanna say that any further continuances would be looked upon with high scraping, so we don't just keep this going and going and going.
We would be glad to communicate that to the appellant.
I'm not sure that we could predispose the future request at this point in time, but I think it's probably pretty obvious that we don't wanna, you know, have these as continued definitely. And that's why we would schedule for a date certain, with the understanding that they would be back, and there'd have to be a pretty compelling reason that we would need to extend it further.
That's what I had in mind.
Well, he only requested a continuance to April 6th, so a continuance to April 15th should not be a problem for him.
Yes, and, and he was made aware that there is no hearing on the 6th, and that the 13th would be the next available hearing date.
I don't have a problem with this.
Okay, any more further comment? Somebody like to make a motion to approve of the continuance?
I so move.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
And that would be just for clarification, a continuance to date certain of April 13th.
Thank you.
That's just what I was about to say.
Perfect. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to number four. 2016959, appeal of planning director's denial of commercial cannabis for Scott Lopez and Justin Eckert. And are you doing that one as well, Paul?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay.
And we have the same situation here. Yesterday, I did receive another request for a continuance from Mr. Eckert. I had spoken with Mr. Lopez the day before. Mr. Lopez has had some recent surgery, I believe in the last two or three weeks, abdominal surgery, which is making it very difficult for him to get around. And the explanation from Mr. Eckert is that he is back in Missouri attending to some family business with his mother. So again, they requested that their appeal be continued until the next available meeting. Again, that would be April 13th. In three weeks, I believe, is what that is. We're ready to present our side if you want to continue with this today, otherwise we have no objection to the planning commission granting the continuance.
Are there any representatives here for this appeal? Okay, is there any public comment for a continuance? We're the quiet crowd today. Okay, so we will bring it back to the commission to discuss and decide if you wanna do a continuance on this one.
Do we already know how much is on April 13th? How much we already have? Can we? I just don't wanna, if we...
Yeah, we, I don't think it's a very full agenda at this point in time.
I know of only one other appeal myself.
Because if it's gonna be full, I could see staggering it maybe till the last meeting instead of the...
I don't think it's gonna be real full agenda, so I would recommend the 13th.
Right, and I don't have an issue with it.
And once again, we have some comments by Deputy County Counsel that I...
Very good, I just saw those this morning myself.
And, and just as, as a preview, on the resolution, on number one, where you say, "Because they did not provide adequate required documentation," I think it'd be good to be, actually using the ordinance's language, "did not provide a signed and dated lease demonstrating lawful possession."
I think we could make that change.
Any further discussion?
Well, if we're gonna be dealing with the resolution, which may or may not be approved. It's a citation to 17.95.165a2b, in paragraph one of the resolution, I think should be R. And there's also a separate part of the urgency ordinance that addresses this, it's N2B, which makes it clear that you have to have a fully executed lease. So I would add those citations. And then on the evidence, it says applicant submitted a handwritten note, it was also undated. And the note was not executed by the tenant. So if we wanted to be a little more complete on the evidence, I would add those. Otherwise, we'll wait to see what the applicant has to say at the hearing.
Very good. We can do that.
And again, we're hoping this won't be the first of many requests for a continuance.
Understood.
Okay. Any further comments?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve of a continuance?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Number five is going to be appeal for 2016-979, and it looks like Miguel is gonna be our presenter on that one. You know, I, I'm gonna, I just wanna, before we start, I wanna check with the commissioners. There was quite a bit of paperwork put in front of us this morning. Would you guys like to take a 10 or 15-minute break to read through that before we start this, or are you good with moving forward?
I don't know that any of that paperwork pertained to this.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, it did.
There were a couple of new documents on this one.
I'm good with moving forward, but that's 'cause I was here early and got it early.
I think a slight pause would be good. I would need a break, we can go.
I had a chance to look at it already. Shall we give you a few minutes to catch up?
I can probably do that while other things are going.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and go forward.
Let me just put this for the public.
Thank you.
So, good morning to the planning commission. And this is Miguel presenting, appeal 2016-979. This is an appeal by Miguel Gutierrez, a commercial cannabis registration denied by the planning director. Bit of context, the location is located at nine point, or the 9.29 acre subject property is located at 797 Goodell Road in Paloma.
We're getting a shadow on the screen. Can we move?
I think I'll send the microphone.
Thank you.
So just a quick timeline for this, this denial. The registrant submitted their application on July 12th, 2016. August 20th, it's supposed to read August 23rd. August 23rd, 2016, a complaint-based inspection was conducted by code compliance. On January 5th, 2017, a second inspection was conducted by code compliance. January 13th, 2017, a third one, and January 4th, or January 31st, a fourth one. Reasons for denial by planning is the registrant failed to post their application pending certificate, and there was illegal camping slash unpermitted trailer on the parcel. They were cultivating within the 75-foot setback. There were, there were two unhoused generators. There was inadequate fencing, and in some parts of the cultivation area, no fencing at all. And there was also grading for the purpose of cultivation beyond the May 10th, 2016 deadline. So failure to meet 17.95.165i posting standards. So the application pending certificate was not posted at all on any of the four inspections that were conducted by code compliance. The worker that was on site was made aware that this is a requirement on the very first inspection, and the registrant didn't, didn't, didn't post the application pending certificate. Failure to meet 17.95.165L, illegal camping, which goes hand-in-hand with a failure to meet 17.95.165N.14, which is an unpermitted trailer on the parcel. As you can see by these photos, as of May 7th, which is a photo that was submitted by the registrant, you can see the parcel on the right, encircled in red. On the August 23rd, 2016 inspection, the parcel's still there, you can see evidence of, of food and cooking preparation stuff. There's a barbecue, there's a generator...
Excuse me, Miguel, I think you just said the parcel was still there, the trailer?
The trailer, I'm sorry. On January 5th, 2017, you can still see that the trailer's still there with evidence of being, it being inhabited as well. And on January 31st, 2017, the trailer's still there. And once more, if you look at the garbage can right there, it's full of beverage containers, and on the table, there's a stove for cooking, evidence that the trailer was being inhabited. The county does not allow camping on parcels beyond 14 days, or 14 consecutive days, not to exceed 30 calendar days in a year. So if the trailer was there from May 7th to August 23rd, then that would, that would be in excess of what the county allows for 2016. And January 5th to January 31st, that's close to being the maximum allowed by the county for 2017. And not only that, but the trailer on the... And not only that, but the trailer on the parcel was not permitted at all. Failure to meet seventeen point nine five point one six five N point eight, growing within the setback. The registrant was growing within the setback. He was made aware, or the worker on site was made aware of this on August 23rd, two thousand sixteen. He, the registrant never removed the plants out of the setback. This can be seen by comparing in August 13th...
Excuse me a second. So the red line there was, is the seventy-five feet that would be required as a setback?
No, the red line is the parcel.
That's the parcel?
Yes, the parcel. And as you can see, the cultivation site is extremely close to the southernmost boundary line, and it's within forty-five feet of the northernmost boundary line.
Excuse me, it should be pointed out that these lines are approximate. It's not a surveyed line, it's from our G I S. But inspection of the field, I assume, determined that the property line was within that vicinity. In some cases, we found that they're quite a bit off. But we use our best judgment as to where the property line is. Sometimes there's fence lines and other things you can tell in the field where those are. We don't rely on this solely for our determination, but it's a rough approximation, and we use other indicators of where the property is.
And they could have had the size grow on that parcel and maintained the setback?
Yes, as you can see, the parcel's pretty long. And not only that, according to the assessor's map book, the parcel's three hundred and nine feet wide from south to north. And the cultivation site is around two hundred and forty-six feet wide in that same area. So no matter what, it doesn't give it enough room, even if the parcel lines are off geographically. And moving on, the first image on the left, that's in the August 3rd aerial. That's what the parcel or the cultivation site looked like. In August 23rd, they were made aware that they were within the setback, and they were told to move the parts of the cultivation that were in the setback. And September 3rd, which is the second aerial, you can see that nothing has changed between the August 13th and the September 3rd aerial, indicating that the registrant did not move the cultivation from the setbacks in those eleven days when they were told to do so. Of continuing on with this, on the southernmost evidence, or the southernmost part of the cultivation site, these pictures were taken, or this picture was taken January 13th, two thousand seventeen. And as you can see, those pots that are on the ground are the same pots that are on the southernmost part of the cultivation site, indicating that the registrant did not remove the pots at all, even after September 3rd, when that last aerial was taken. And here's another, another image for the southernmost cultivation, or the southernmost part of the cultivation area. And the same scenario, there's evidence that the pots never were moved from...
What are the red lines in that?
The red lines are just little guidelines to compare the red lines with the ones that are on the aerial to indicate what rows I'm speaking of. And in his appeal letter, Mr. Gutierrez states that all plants, pots, and soil were removed from the setback, and this is evidence that at the very least, the pots and the soil were not removed. And if you look closely also, you could see the stalks of the cannabis plants, which look to be mature, indicating that the registrant never removed the plants as well. This is the northernmost part of the cultivation area, and you could use the, what's it called, the solar panel as a kind of a guideline. You could see it on the aerial photo, highlighted in red, and you could see it on the picture. And you could also see that row of cannabis, which is the furthest, the northernmost aspect of cultivation. You can see that highlighted in purple, and once more, this was, this part of the cultivation was never removed from the, from the setbacks. All right, moving along, failure to meet seventeen point nine five point sixteen point N point thirteen, unhoused generators. So during the August 23rd inspection by code compliance, code noted that there were two unhoused generators on the parcel. In his appeal letter, Mr. Gutierrez claims that, that he did have housing for the generators, and there's no evidence, or code didn't see them because they were in the shed. However, during January 31st, code actually took some photographs inside of the shed, and there's no evidence of housing for the two generators, including the shed itself, since it's not insulated, and that's what the code requires. Failure to meet seventeen point nine five point one six five N point 10. So no, no fencing and inadequate fencing. So on the picture at the bottom, that's from August 23rd, the August 23rd inspection. And only about five percent of the cultivation area was fenced off. The fencing was made out of plastic. And code compliance told the worker to, that this had to be corrected to meet the urgency ordinance. And as you can see from the August 13th, two thousand sixteen aerial, highlighted in red, that's the portion of the fence that you're looking at, that you're looking at on that picture. By September 3rd, you could see also that nothing else has been fenced, and that same fence remained, indicating that the registrant never removed the, or not, not, but never continued building an inadequate fence within those eleven days of being told to do so. Lastly, failure to meet seventeen point nine five point one six five point N point seven, grading beyond May 10th, two thousand sixteen. So this portion of the code states that no additional grading or earth movement for the purposes of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10th, two thousand sixteen. A new area, or code compliance noted that a new area was graded sometime between August 23rd, the initial inspection, and January 15th, which is the secondary inspection. And this new area was graded for the purposes of drying cannabis. Drying cannabis is considered cultivation under the urgency ordinance. So this, doing this is a violation of that provision. Furthermore, expanding on the grading, as of, the urgency ordinance also states that as of May 10th, two thousand sixteen, all grading and earth movement in the portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation shall have been completed. So on January 5th, code compliance received a complaint that heavy machinery was being taken to that parcel. On January 13th, they did a, they did a third inspection and found that much of the parcel had been graded. So sometime between January 5th and January 13th, there was massive grading done. All of this grading is unpermitted. In, in Mr. Gutierrez's appeal letter, he claims that this grading is done for the purposes, purposes of establishing a twelve hundred square foot metal shop. However, the graded area seems to be, or it's in actually an approximation of forty-six thousand square feet, which seems excessive for a twelve hundred square foot metal shop. Code compliance issued a stop work order with, with some instructions that told the registrant that they had to contact Public Works and code compliance within ten days of January 31st. As of now, I believe, the registrant has yet to, to follow those instructions and contact Public Works and code compliance about the grading. And here's just a little bit of a scope of the area that was graded. If you start on the top left photo, highlighted in red is the solar panel. You could see that in the aerial image also highlighted in red. You move a little bit south, and you'll move to the next photo, which is the, the tractor. You can see a tractor on the right of the photo. And if you move to the bottom left photo, you can see the other side of the tractor. So just to give you a, a field of view of how, how big this grading is. And lastly, it ends on the third photo. And highlighted in purple in aerial imagery is in a scope of the, the area that was graded. And I believe that's it. I do have enlarged images of the aerials, if you'd like to see them. And I also have a few more pictures if you guys are, want to see anything else.
What are your extra pictures, Ed?
Some of the more enlarged pictures that were used in the, in the presentation. Here's some more evidence of camping, this is a shower. An enlarged picture of the trailer with, so you can see evidence of people are living there. Here's a, another, another shot of the newly graded area for the purposes of drying. Once more, the trailer. This is an enlarged picture of the northernmost part of the boundary, or of the cultivation area, so you could get a better view of how cultivation is still taking place. Once more, an exp, a bigger size, or a bigger image of the newly graded area. On the left, you can see some of the, the grading that was done. As you can see, they graded over their own pots. I'm not sure why, I believe they're two hundred gallon pots, so they're not easy to move, so they just decided to grade over them. On the right, you see some evidence of fencing, but if you could call it that, it's bird netting. This is the southernmost part of the cultivation site. Just a blown up picture of the one that was in the presentation. Some more grading, as you can see, there's a porta potty on its side, that's on the southernmost part of the parcel. More grading, and this is what it looks like from the road coming in from Paloma. And I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Miguel?
Yes. If you go to attachment four, figure one, which is, I think, supplied to show cultivation within the setback in January. It looks to me like what's in those pots is dried, dried up stalks. So where's the evidence of actual cultivation continuing within the setback in January?
Well, like I stated, on the, on their appeal letter, Mr. Gutierrez claimed that he removed all pots and soil from the setbacks, which he never did. And then those stalks, yes, they're dry, but they also look to be mature when they, when they were chopped down, indicating that the cannabis, you know, grew to an approximate, or to its, to its fullest extent, or at least to where it could be cultivated.
But if all he has left there is, is dry stalks from the previous year that aren't growing, it's in January, I'm having a little difficulty seeing how that qualifies as continuing cultivation. At that time, I understand he was within setback earlier. I'm having a little trouble with that. The other thing is, looking at the cannabis cultivation site inspection report, there's a, a number of figures, and they add up to forty-two thousand nine seventy-one. And that's of the August 23rd, sixteen report?
Correct.
Is that the amount of canopy that was in growing?
What was that on, can you repeat that?
Would that not be a separate violation?
It would be a separate violation. The only thing is, at this point, I really have no evidence of it, except for the, the aerial imagery. But at the time, yeah, definitely would have been a separate violation.
Well, the inspection report added up these figures. And I assume those are canopy figures, aren't they?
It's grading figures, isn't that correct?
Or are they grading?
I believe it's canopy.
I think, I think the extensive grading happened after this, didn't it? After eight twenty-three?
So your, your view is that there's not sufficient evidence to support a finding that there was cultivation excess of the twenty-two thousand square feet permitted or asked for?
Well, based on a past Planning Commission hearing, one of the complaints was excess canopy. And I'm not exactly, I'm not exactly sure how that, that played out, but it was, it was dropped by the Planning Commission, I believe. The appellant was able to continue his cultivation site.
And what I'm going to refer to was the fact that we are required to provide, the grower has twenty-four hours to remove any excess canopy upon notification of that. And it was unclear whether they were notified that they were in excess of the canopy. The photograph that we're...
Peter, can you turn it on your mic?
I turned it off. So the, 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 the excess canopy issue was associated with the, the need to provide notice and twenty-four hours, you know, of notification that they were in excess of the canopy. And we were unclear whether or not that was actually provided. The photograph that Commissioner Wooster referred to, exhibit four one, was intended to demonstrate that the cultivation continued. We sort of used the combination of the aerial imagery after, you know, the, you know, from September, as well as these pictures that sort of showed that they continued to grow over time. Granted, when these pictures were taken, they were not cultivating. And we can't use that as a, you know, statement of fact that they were cultivating at that time, because it's January and there's nothing in the ground. But that they did not remove the plants in the, or the pots, or as Miguel pointed out, that the indication that, you know, the false statement that the appellant made to us, that he did remove the pots and soil, and, and they weren't removed. And the conclusion that we came up with is they continued to grow harvested and mature plants, and only, only at that time were the plants removed, when they were harvested.
Well, we also have the aerial photograph of September 3rd, two thousand sixteen, that certainly seems to show mature plants within the setback.
Right, right.
Well, on eight twenty-three, code compliance noted that the grow was spread over approximately forty-two thousand square feet. So when you're looking at the measurements that she's documented here, the forty-two nine seventy-one, if you turn to her first page in her summary, she documents the grow to be spread across approximately forty-two thousand square feet. Does that answer the question you were trying to get to earlier?
Yes.
Okay. And then when they went back on one five, it was still forty-two thousand square feet, because no changes were made. And I think her pictures cover that. Okay, is there any other questions for Miguel? Otherwise, I'm going to go to the appellant and let him have a chance to speak. Okay. Is the appellant here? Any representatives for the appellant? Okay. Then I guess we can go to public comment. Does anybody have any public comment they would like to make?
Can I just leave this for you to read, or do I want me to?
Do you want to read it into the record? Or would you like to leave it with...
I'd kind of like to remain anonymous.
Then you can hand it to Annette. You are on camera, I'm going to note that right now, so. Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment? Okay.
Well, can I say something?
Please.
Okay, so we live next to them, right? And they were living there, you know, on the grow, not Miguel, but some people he hired. And how can they live there without a permit, without septic? I mean, when we built our house, we couldn't do that. We had to have permit, we had to have everything in place before we could even move on to our property. And they just moved up there, and I don't think there was anything in place, so. Just want to make sure that... Did they have a permit to build anything or anything, or? Don't you have to have a septic?
As of now, they have no permits on, for that parcel.
And have they ever had any permits?
They've never had any permits, that's what, either.
So is it different if you're building a home? Because why would it be different? You should have to have some kind of permit and have proof that you have septic... Water bu, potty buckets?
That is part of our reason for denial, was that they did not have adequate permits.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's covered, thank you.
There's more in the letter if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further public comment? Okay, then I'm going to bring it back. Miguel, do you have anything further to say?
Just real quick, I, the resolution, that's before you... Uh, just real quick, I, um, the resolution, that's before you, I amended it to fix a date on finding number three under evidence. It should, uh, read January fifth, two thousand seventeen. But the resolution you guys have says January fifth, two thousand sixteen.
Should we cover the resolution at this point, or? And on the, on the evidence for number three, I think the last sentence should, the word additional should be put in between significant and portion. Code compliance noted that a significant additional portion of the parcel had been graded. And the other comment I would have on that is, on evidence for number seven, instead of saying the registrant does not meet any, any of the criteria that would allow, it seems to me that evidence should go into the details about connections, permits, et cetera. I have not drafted up an alternative, but it just, we need, I think we ought to have in the evidence what the specific criteria were that he did not meet.
Well, I took that as being covered by the reference immediately above that provides, that, that describes all of the things you have to have. An approved potable water source, source is misspelled, by the way. An approved septic system, a public sewer connection, and a permitted power source. And the evidence, the sentence immediately following, I undertook or understood, referred back to those criteria.
Then I'd be happy if you said any of the criteria stated above, under section such and such, that'd be fine, but...
I think that would make it clear.
Okay. Any further comments?
No.
All right. Okay. I'd like to say thank you to the code compliance, because this was a fantastic report that was provided to us. Thank you.
And to the planning department for summarizing it all.
Okay. Um, if there's, uh, no further comments, um, if somebody would like to make a motion on the resolution as amended?
I move to approve the resolution as amended and deny the appeal.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Huh? Yeah. Okay. Do you guys want to take a ten-minute break, or do you want to carry on?
Oh, let's take a break.
Let's take a break. Okay. We'll reconvene at ten oh five. Next on the agenda, we'll call a meeting back to order. Um, we will go to two zero one six two zero five, a denial of commercial cannabis. And Miguel, you're going to take that one over?
Yes. Uh, once more, this is Miguel with the planning department. Uh, today we're looking, uh, today I'm presenting, uh, appeal two thousand sixteen dash two zero five. This is a commercial cannabis denial by the planning director. The project location of the forty-point fourteen acre subject property is located at sixty-one ninety-five Summit Level Road. What was that? No. In a railroad, in railroad flat. The complaint against the appellant is that, uh, by September seventh, he did not submit a seller's permit, uh, he did not submit a business license application, and he did not submit evidence of compliance with the water quality control board. On February first, two thousand seventeen, um, I personally spoke with Mr. Sam Filippo on the phone, inquiring about these documents, whether he had them or not. Um, he responded that he didn't have them, he acknowledged that. He, uh, stated that he wasn't aware that he needed them. And furthermore, in his appeal letter, Mr. Mr. Sam Filippo does not refute the fact that he, he doesn't, he never had these documents. And, uh, he states that to his knowledge, his application was complete when, uh, he submitted it, which that statement is true, his application was complete on June thirtieth. However, these documents were due subsequently on September seventh. And, uh, in his appeal letter, he also mentions that, um, you know, he, he asked the planning commission to approve this, uh, his appeal. He has, uh, financial hardships and, uh, medical condition. And, uh, that's it for me.
Okay. Is the appellant here today?
How's it going? I'm Max Sam Filippo. I'm here to just, uh, you know, talk to you guys and see, you know. I'd seen the stuff on there, maybe it was just a little unclear. I've been dealing with a lot of stuff. I work full-time in the Bay Area doing construction, and when this all came about, I wasn't even planning on doing the cultivation. And then, you know, friends and family kind of talked to me and knew it. I have a nine-year-old grandfather that was a World War II veteran. He uses a lot of medicine to make, uh, his stuff. And he's like, "Oh, you should do it and grow some for me," and da-da-da-da. So we got into it, I applied for that, uh, the application. Sorry, I'm diabetic too, just recently diagnosed, uh, six months ago. And, uh, I'm kind of low right now, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I went ahead and I, I filed for all this stuff. I went ahead and got the bill, uh, the business license through California and applied for all the, uh, other water board and all the paperwork I have, and it's all current and paid for. It was up at my house, we left the Bay Area this morning at three o'clock to try and get up there to grab the paperwork from the house, but we were unable to. We actually got stuck on the way into the house and barely made it here on time, so I don't have any, uh, formal documents to show you, but they're, they're available. And as soon as it dries out, I can get them or dig through some emails and show you that I'm, uh, you know, trying to get all the required stuff that I failed to get in the first place. And it was just a big fiasco at first with trying to get everything together and dealing with the county and, you know, there was some misinformation. And, yeah, I mean, you know, it's my fault too, so. And, uh, I mean, I don't know what else you guys want to hear from me.
Does anybody have any questions with the appellant?
Do you remember receiving, uh, instructions from the planning department on what's required in addition to, uh-
It was all in the, the paperwork. You know, I'd been really busy, I read through it, this was months ago, and, you know, I just kind of went over the head with all the, you know, new child and the health issues and trying to commute back and forth and, you know, it's really sloppy up there. They did a bunch of logging by my house, so it's just been a nightmare just to even get to the place and trying to get the loggers to, you know, do something with the road or the county. And, you know, it just kind of went over my head, and I'm willing and able to try and meet all the requirements. And, you know, I poured every, every, my life savings into getting the property just because I love it, not because of the cultivation. You know, we keep a nice tidy place, everything that we have is permitted to legal houses and septic and, so, you know, I can definitely see where people are coming from with the other growers and all the traffic coming in from out of state and, you know, so.
The, the appeal letter says you've enclosed a receipt of my California state seller's permit and a copy of the Calaveras County business license application, but I, it's not in our packet. Did you send that to the planning department?
Uh, I'm, my wife may have sent it, but I have the whole packet of everything. And like I said, I could not access my house this morning. We tried to leave the Bay Area with plenty of time to get there and just failed to get there. It's ten miles up Summit Level, I don't know if you know where that is, but the snow and everything and the, this winter has really destroyed the road, so.
But this, this letter's dated February thirteenth, and it says the documents were enclosed with it. Did you send them with this letter?
February thirteenth. They must have been, yeah, I don't know if, they, they were, because as soon as I got off the phone with planning department, I was like, "Oh, man." So that was my initial thing, was to, to get all these paperwork together. And, you know, it took a while for the seller's permit to come in from California and all the other things. And then, yeah, I don't know, everything's in the process. I have the documentation to prove that. I think we have three of the, uh, four, was there four requirements that I had failed to? Just three, yes. I think we had two of the three completed, and we were waiting on, uh, just having the time to go down, because you have to register for the water board, I guess, in person in Sacramento.
But this is all, those documents and that, those actions happened after you were contacted by the planning department?
Yes, they happened after. You know, I just, I thought that, it was just so like, "Oh, you called, you're denied." Like, I was like, denied? Like, well, you know, I've been putting everything I got into this, so, you know, it was maybe negligent on my part, but, you know, I really have been overwhelmed with just, just the cost of living and getting by, so.
So you got a notice from code compliance to make corrections?
Uh, I just got a phone call. And then I looked over, they, I think, uh, I had a letter sent out after that with the, with the appeal information that stated these things.
Okay.
But I'd looked online and figured out what exactly I needed.
Where did you go to get a permit for the trailer?
Trailer. I don't have a trailer-
I'm reading the wrong letter.
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
Never mind.
We should point out, Miguel-
And there is a trailer on the property, but it was left from the previous owner, and it's unmovable, but it's not lived in. And then, within the past month, I have actually proceeded to tear it apart and take it to the dump.
If you look, Miguel, excuse me a second.
Of course.
In the, in the documents you gave us, there's a copy of a letter from another, uh, another proceeding that needs to be deleted from this package. Excuse us, to a little housekeeping-
So is that what I was saying? I was. Okay. So I don't feel so bad now.
And I'd also like to add one more thing, that, uh, just the communication with the planning department has been tough. When we went in for the appeal and I paid the money for the appeal, she had specifically told me and my wife that the appeal was on March ninth. I don't know if you guys saw me here a few weeks ago, and I sat here for three hours. I didn't even think to read this here. And I was like, "No more?" You know, and I went in there, I was upset, I'm sorry. You know, but, uh, it's just, that's one more day off of work that I could have been, you know, providing, so. And she specifically told us, "March ninth, if you don't receive anything in the mail," or whenever, that was March ninth, right?
Okay. So just for the record, there's a letter in here that, in your packet that we received that doesn't belong. It was actually from a previous appeal.
All right.
That's why I was asking you the questions about code enforcement and the trailer.
All right. And to my knowledge, all my, everything at the property is within code and, you know, reasonable.
When did you get your seller's permit?
I got it the day that I spoke with him or the day after.
Do you have a copy of the seller's permit on file?
No, I don't.
Did you get the, hang on, did you get the February thirteenth letter? From him?
Uh, no, the, the appeal letter? Yeah, that was, uh-
I guess that's what it is. It's, it's to Peter Mar, dated February thirteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, um, that was received February fourteenth, I believe. And, um, it was, that's the actual appeal letter, appealing the planning director's decision. It was, uh, taken in by another planner on that day.
It does say, "I have enclosed a receipt of my California state seller's permit, a receipt from my EIN, and a copy of the Calaveras County Business License App. I am currently filing my notice of intent with Water Quality Control Board." So the question is, were those items actually included with that letter?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you if they gave it, they gave it to the planner that took it in. Um, when this appeal got to my desk, all there was, was the appeal letter. I asked the planner that took it in, and she said that, um, that was all, that was two, it was just the appeal letter.
So I guess the question now is, did, did the planning department get approximately February fourteenth of seventeen somehow get a copy of his-
Well, as Mr. Filippo stated, uh, he's not sure whether his wife mailed it in or not.
We did not. We did, we did not receive, uh, the enclosed, the documents that were stated to be enclosed. All we got was the letter.
All right, thanks.
Do you have the state water board, um, letter now?
I have all the other documents, we haven't had the time. You have to register, from the, the form online, it seemed like you had to go down to Sacramento Rancho in person to register with the California Water Board, is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, and you haven't done that?
No, I was just, you know, I've been so busy, I was waiting to hear what is going going on. You know, everything seems like it's up in the air and just another lost day, you know, if they ban it, if I get denied, you know, it's just, but, um, you know, I'm definitely going to finish all, uh, requirements. You know, it was never my plan to ignore these things.
Okay. Do you have any further information to add?
No, just that I have, uh, two of the three requirements already handled, and I have back, you know, I have the receipts for all the stuff that I paid for and documentation at the house as soon as I can get up there and bring it down here.
Okay.
So that, that was it.
Is there any further questions of the appellant right now?
Not at this time.
Okay. Okay. Is there any public comment on this one?
A letter was submitted to me this morning by a neighbor, and I passed it along to you guys.
Okay. Do you have any rebuttal information that you would like to?
No.
Okay. I'm going to let him read that letter before I close it up and let him comment if he'd like.
Yeah, this is the first time I've seen this letter, or even acknowledged.
It just came in this morning.
Yeah. Because I don't even have any, really. There's no neighbors that are within, I have one neighbor that's close by, and this is not him.
He states in the letter that he doesn't live on the property yet, so.
Yeah. And he, yeah, I think, yeah. And this is just seems-
Okay. You have any comments on that, or you're good?
No, I mean, just, I don't, I know who this is, and he owns pretty much the entire mountain, and he lives probably approximately three miles away. He has a compound with very many houses and buildings, and I don't see why he would ever, you know, uh, even, and everybody that lives by says that he just wants to buy everybody out to own the entire mountain, because his family used to, or something like this. And he's just very, uh, against anybody even living up there, so. You know, and I've never had a confrontation with the guy, let alone even spoke with him. So I don't know why, and I don't even know how you would know about this other than, uh, public information that was given out. You know, nobody would have even known where, where I'm at or what I'm doing if it wasn't for the county disclosing the information.
Well, actually-
Well, as part of the appeal, we notify every adjacent property and everyone within five hundred feet.
All right, so then, yeah, that must be why, because never spoke with him, never had an issue. I'm very quiet and keep to myself. I didn't have any hired in help whatsoever throughout the year. I don't really like bringing people to my property, even if, you know, for work or whatever reason, so. This just seems like just somebody that is holding a grudge for no apparent reason. It has, you know, it's been done- And has, you know, it's been done, you know, people have been growing here for a long time illegally and, you know, disturbing waterways and polluting. And that's not what I'm about and that's not what I've done, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
And a resolution that I, I also submitted a amended resolution. And out of that amended resolution, I've gone ahead and changed the date so it's amended again. It's on number three under evidence that should read February 1st, 2017. The ones, the one you guys have says 2016.
On that statement of evidence, it, it seems to me that the evidence should not be about whether it's compliance with water board, but compliance with the ordinance. So I'd suggest that we'd say by February 1st, 2017, Mr. Sanfilippo had not submitted to the planning department any of the documents pertaining to the Central Valley Water Quality Control Board that are required by section. I can, I can do it more slowly.
Okay. Go ahead and close the hearing, bring it back for comment for the commissioners. I did ask the public and nobody came up, so we went back to rebel. Now we're here. Okay. Anybody have any comments?
It's just, it's just a case of non-compliance. In the past, we've insisted on compliance with these requirements. And this is way out.
Mr. Sanfilippo, it just seems to us, we have to apply the statute uniformly to everybody. And in the past, if people did not comply with the September 7th deadline, or at least if they, if their reason for non-compliance was they already had the documents, they had them in their pocket, but they forgot to put it on the desk at that day, that could have been an exception. But the planning commission has been quite stringent in requiring that these conditions of the ordinance be complied with by the dates that are specified in the ordinance. And it makes it tough when we're confronted with somebody who, for various reasons, just missed the compliance requirements and is not trying to put one over on the county or anything else, but the requirements are there and the, it's very important in a regulatory ordinance of this sort that the compliance be very specific and that we have to hold everyone to the same standard. It makes, it's harder sometimes to hold to that standard than, than other times, but I'm afraid, I, I feel that we're going to have to deny the appeal because you were presented with the requirements in the statute and you did not comply.
Any of the other commissioners have any comments? Okay. I think Commissioner Ladish said it best, we have to rule consistent on the ordinance. I'm sorry you missed the deadlines. The basis is going to, for me, will be ruling on the ordinance, not on the letter from the neighbor. That doesn't play any role for me today. So at this point, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, you're going to second it. Did, did we, he wanted?
But that includes the amendment.
That's what I was going to do.
Ms. Ladish, as amended.
Okay, thank you.
As amended, amended.
So who made the motion? So you'll need to be as amended.
I move to approve the resolution as amended.
Okay, and now you can second.
I will second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
This, this action is final unless appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
So denied.
Your appeal was denied and the, the action of this commission is appealable to the Board of Supervisors. You must file an appeal within 15 calendar days with the clerk of the board.
And then with, with that, if I appeal again, if it were to get approved, then it gets banned. I'm just out another 500 or another appeal.
That, that is the risk that you're facing at this point in time.
All right. Okay. Next on the agenda is a study session. Thank you, Miguel.
Thank you.
And I don't believe there are any study sessions?
No, we don't have a study session.
Okay, so then we would go to public comment. If anybody has anything to say that was not on the agenda for today? Okay. Are there any commissioner reports? I believe Commissioner Bocelli had something he wanted to discuss.
Yes, I have a situation that's come up with a gentleman and his wife, Matt Messier, I think is her name. They are barbers in Valley Springs. They have the barber shop at the intersection of 12 and 26, the old train station. They've, in that barber shop, which is only one portion of the train station, there's an adjoining room and they have been planning to make it into a cigar with beer and wine emporium. And I gather they applied for a business permit and were denied. And the denial was, was not a denial, but it was a denial. It was a requirement that they do a CUP. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, I'm coming in at the tail end of this one. And I think the heart of the denial was, there's a definition in the permissive use statute that uses the term bar. And Peter believes what they're doing is a bar. The people believe it's not a bar because they don't serve liquor. It's beer and wine and they've got all sorts of reasons why it isn't. Anyway, they did not appeal this decision, but apparently there is a process whereby we as a panel can put it on the agenda to discuss this definition and I gather give feedback to the director.
Yeah. So, so yes.
So that's what I'm asking, is that we put it on, and if we can put it on, if everyone agrees, I would ask for the second.
So it's really not formally an appeal of the decision I made because the appellant or the individual did not make a timely filing of an appeal. But the commission is empowered to interpret the code. And if the commission as a body wants to place this interpretation of the code on the agenda, we can discuss it, then that's, I think, what Mr. Bocelli is, is asking for consideration, whether or not you think that the issue of is a wine and beer serving establishment a bar under our county code? And as a bar, it would require a conditional use permit in the C1 zone. His other option would be to rezone the property to C2, which allows a bar by right, or to apply for a conditional use permit.
So there's options.
So the question is whether or not the, do you as a commission feel that it would be appropriate to consider this interpretation, not specifically for Mr. Messier, but as it applies county-wide under the code? And without getting into discussion today, really, the only issue is, do you want to put it on the agenda or not?
And hopefully by then, we would have something in writing.
And truly, if it was on the agenda, I would provide a report to you that gave you, you know, more background on the issue and how and why I came up with that conclusion.
Fill in the blanks that I have when I know about it, so.
Well, at first, I, I hesitated when I heard about this. But I think if, if it's an issue that has happened in your district, I would like to be a transparent and open commission and have these discussions. Doesn't mean that we're going to disagree or agree, but the opportunity to look at it and discuss it, I think I would be in support of putting it on the agenda.
I would too.
I agree for the, basically for the same reasons.
Right around the corner from you.
I don't work anymore.
Sorry.
But I'd like to see it discussed, not that I think that it should be approved, but I'd like to see it discussed.
That's the only action today is to decide to put it on the agenda or not.
I think that would be a good idea, although I'm a little unclear as to what gives this commission the power to issue a binding interpretation of a county ordinance.
I think that would be the question, is whether it's binding.
So would it not be that we would have a discussion and if we found a finding, it would have to go forward to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation for them to rule?
I think this is, I think, I think maybe we ought to put it on the agenda and in the meantime, the county council can give us advice as to what the effect of our conclusion might be. It might be just persuasive guidance to the planning director. I don't know.
Well, that's, that would be fine, as long as it's clear to everybody what gives us the power to do what we're going to do and what is that.
Yes. I think, I think, I think having the county council be able to give us some guidance on that, then of course, we have to decide whether we accept that guidance or not.
Okay, so the question is, do we want to put it on the agenda for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. So the commissioners have been polled and the consensus is yes to please add it to the agenda.
And I will research the enabling ordinance for the commission to see what your rights and responsibilities are.
I think the second meeting in April would be better. I'm not absolutely sure of their schedule on that first meeting, so.
Yeah, it would certainly, whatever, whenever you want to do that, it gives me a little more time to do some more research and, although, the research has all been done, it's a matter of packaging up what I prepared previously, but to look into the authority of the commission a little more thoroughly as well.
Thank you.
Is there any other commissioner reports?
Not from me.
You didn't attend any wonderful meetings you want to tell everybody about? No. Do we have a planning director report for today?
Just, I guess, just a little update of where we're at right now. I am expecting to receive the admin draft of the EIR for the cannabis cultivation ordinance. We are using that document for the ban ordinance that the board has directed us to prepare. And so, once I receive that, we'll be reviewing internally as well as with outside counsel to ensure that it meets the legal requirements. And I'm hoping that that will be available for public comment, beginning of the public comment period, the first week of April. And so that's what I'm looking for.
And that public comment is what, 40?
The 45-day comment period. So it may become moot as if the measure B passes, but then there's expectation there could be litigation, so we're just sort of moving forward with the options. That document could be used for either a ban ordinance or a regulatory ordinance, but at this point in time, the board's direction is to prepare a ban ordinance. Continue to work on the general plan EIR and working closely with the consultants. Again, I hope to have that out within another month or two, but I don't know the exact timeframe. We're still, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of analysis that goes into an EIR for a general plan, so that's, that's in process, but I think we're making good progress on it. I've been going to, there've been two so far and a third one tonight of District Two Town Hall meetings. Very interesting, well-attended, about 120 people at the last two meetings so far. Tonight's meeting is up in West Point, so it's a good opportunity for the public to ask questions of staff, Public Works Director, myself, CAO, others, the county assessors there, people involved in the tree mortality as well as the heat fire recovery. So it's been a good opportunity for District Two folks to ask questions of staff as well as Supervisor Garamendi. Of course, the number one question seems to be, the overwhelming number of questions are all about cannabis. And they're, it's heated but polite discussion for the most part, so.
I watched one of the live videos and it, there were good questions. I mean, it was, I've seen some tree mortality and water, road issues discussed. It was good information.
I think that's about it.
Okay.
Continue to move forward.
All right, well then, if there's no further, I asked for public comment already, right? Yes. Okay, then we are adjourned and thank you all for coming. I thought we would be here half the day. We didn't.